I would like to call this meeting to order. I'm not getting a mic. Good evening. Thank you. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome to USD 305 Board of Education meeting. Today's December 11th, 2018. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Dr. Hardy, are there any additions or corrections?
Yes, Madam President. There is an addendum to the personnel agenda, and that's at your place.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Gary?
I move we approve the agenda with the additional personnel report.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, seven zero. Next on our agenda is recognitions and presentations, and we do have Superintendent's Excellence Awards with Jennifer Bradford Vernon.
Good evening. Our first group of awards this evening goes to cross-country state qualifiers at Central High School. Joel Wilkerson is the coach. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? Will all the cross-country students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsor at this time? As I call your name, please step toward Dr. Hardy so you can receive your award. And at that time, if parents would like to take a picture, stand up, and we'll be glad to pause for a photo. Salina Central had seven athletes qualify for state. Brandon Falcon, Jr., Kayden Cobb, Jr., Brianna Torres, Jr., Cora White, freshman, Madison Pham, Jr., Cora Powers, Senior, Peyton Griffin, Jr. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now? Our next group of awards goes to cross-country state qualifiers at South High School. Travis Peterson is the coach. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the cross-country students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsor? Salina South had three athletes qualify for state and cross-country. Girls' cross-country, Morgan Fisher, sophomore. Boys' cross-country, Keaton Munsel, Senior, Brandon Rechtinwald, Senior. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now? And now we recognize tennis state qualifiers at South High School. Ryan Stewart is the coach, and due to a basketball game, Mr. Stewart won't be able to attend. Megan Kingry, Assistant, will be presenting the students this evening. And will all the tennis students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsor? The Salina South girls' tennis team finished third place at the state tournament. This was the first KSHSAA team trophy in South High history. Singles. Robin Logan, Jr. Her overall record was 27-12. She placed eighth in singles at state, was a Class 5A All-State and Class 5A Academic All-State player, and an all AVCTL singles player. Iliana Armbrust, freshman. Her overall record was 16-12, and she was a state singles qualifier. State doubles participants. Sidney McAdoo, Senior, and Jayden Zemeznik, Senior. They placed sixth in state doubles and had an overall record of 33-7. Both Class 5A All-State and Class 5A Academic All-State players, both regional doubles champions and all AVCTL doubles players. Sidney finished her career with 110 wins, the second most at South High since the year 2000. Gillian Coleman, Jr., and Alexa Nunamaker, sophomore. They placed ninth in state doubles and had an overall record of 20-11. Both Class 5A All-State and Class 5A Academic All-State players and all AVCTL doubles players. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now? Our next group of awards goes to tennis state qualifiers at Central High School. Mike Gaul is the coach. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the tennis students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsor? The Lady Mustangs team finished the year as league champions, regional champions, and placed fourth as a team in 5A tennis. Singles, Emery Newton, Jr., finished fifth place at regionals and 12th place at state. She finished the season 23-16. Callie Samborn, sophomore, was the regional champion and finished seventh place at state. She finished the season 25-9. Doubles, Maddie Stack, Senior, and Grace Holgersen, Senior, were both four-year letter winners. Our members of the 100 Career Win Club in varsity competition placed fourth and seventh at state tournament the last two years and had a record of 31-5. Cameron Phelps, Jr., and Reagan Geisler, sophomore, were state qualifiers for the first time. They placed fourth at regionals and had a record of 24-10. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now? Now we'll recognize two Gulf state qualifiers at South High School. Kaylee Hurley is the coach. Will our Gulf students please line up next to Kaylee Hurley and Dr. Hardy at this time? And we will mention the team members' names. Tatum Forrester, Senior, and Zoe Norton, freshman. Congratulations to all. Our next group of awards goes to one ECO meet qualifier at South High School. Matt Mosher sponsored the team from South High. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will our ECO meet student please line up next to Dr. Hardy and his sponsor? Salina South had one qualifier for state. Gavin Jones, Jr., who placed second at state in herpetology. Congratulations, Gavin. Next, we recognize ECO meet qualifiers at Central High School. Susan Gaskell sponsored the team from Central High. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And if any of our ECO meet students are here, please line up as well. The ECO meet team placed sixth at the state competition. This team has qualified for state every year since they were in eighth grade. Team members are Avery Darby, sophomore, Catriona Davis, sophomore, Erin Black, sophomore, Reagan Stein, sophomore. Congratulations to all of you, and would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now? Our next group of awards goes to students who qualified for robotics at South. Adam Lesser and Lyric Carnes are the coaches. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the robotics students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsors? Participating students were Nicholas Lake, Jr., Jason Wen, Senior, Om Patel, sophomore, Grant Osborne, sophomore, Evan Patchett, freshman, Anastasia Pomchulern, Senior, Nathan Streeter, sophomore, Jacob Wilcox, Senior, Jonah Winsky, Senior. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now? South High School state math competitors will be recognized next. Candace Mahoney and Jason Hooper sponsored the team for South High. Will you please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the math students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsors? The South High math team placed fourth overall in the 4A, 5A, 6A high school category at Fort Hays. South High had 17 students competing who contributed points to the overall score. Iliana Armbrust, freshman, Laney Brown, freshman, Zach Davidson, freshman, Emma Shulda, freshman, Avery McComer, freshman, Susan Reed, sophomore, Om Patel, sophomore, Reese Altman, sophomore, Nathan Streeter, sophomore, Peyton Froome, Jr., David Olgenberger, Jr., Trey Turner, Senior, Seth Thompson, Senior, Isaac Mitchell, Senior, Taylor Davison, Senior, Luke Straight, Senior, Gage Roberts, Senior. Please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now. Our last group of awards goes to students at Central High School who competed in state math competitions. Deanna Cullen sponsored the team from Central High. Please join Dr. Hardy in the front? And will all the math students please line up next to Dr. Hardy and their sponsor at this time? Central High students participated in the Fort Hays State University Math Relays. Fifteen students competed. Charles Goldbach, freshman, Candace Gomendosa, freshman, Ben Kraft, freshman, Spencer Angel, sophomore, Reed McHenry, sophomore, Hannah North, sophomore, Kayden Cobb, Jr., Houston Griffiths, Jr., Caleb Klein, Jr., Molly Michaelis, Jr., Harper Williams, Senior, Gage Burmaster, Senior, Riley Counts, Senior, Callahan Figs, Senior, Phoebe Hilton, Senior. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Next on our agenda is approval of consent agenda items, which include personnel report, financial reports, the November bills list, November bond bills list, October treasures report, October investment report, October journal entries, bond budget summary for November. Approve encumbrance listings, which include two AOS for the replacement of the data switching infrastructure in non-attendance center buildings in the amount of $280,850, to CDWG in the amount of $68,856 for the purpose of accidental damage warranties for Chromebooks. Approve Heartland Early Education Self-Assessment. Do I have a motion?
Madam President?
Madam President, I move we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second the motion.
Approved and seconded. Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, seven zero. Thank you. Next on our agenda is public forum. At this time, if there's anyone that wants to come forward and speak, they may do so. Next on our action agenda is inter-local agreement with Smoky Hill Education Service Center with Dr. Jim Hardy.
Madam President and Board of Education, USD 305 has been a member of the Smoky Hill Education Service Center since its inception in 1990. It's part of our effort as a school district to be efficient, to be able to enter into a cooperative like such as this one for not just our purchases, but also for professional development and many other opportunities come along with that. So with that in mind, it's recommended that you approve the inter-local agreement and membership in the Smoky Hill Education Service Center effective July 1st, 2019, and through June 30th, 2024, as presented.
Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I make a motion that we accept the inter-local agreement with the Smoky Hill Education Service Center, as was presented by Dr. Hardy.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
And? Any discussion? Comments? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, seven zero. Next on our agenda is board team for negotiations discussion with certified personnel. Erin Wright.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Negotiations season is fast upon us. It's time for you all to nominate and appoint the team that will represent you in negotiations for the 2019-20 school years. So far, we would like to have you, we recommend that you appoint the team as, to include myself as the Executive Director of Human Resources and Legal Services, the Executive Director of Business, and three board members.
Thank you.
Madam President, I move that the three board members be added as follows. Yourself, Nandra Elbow, Anne Zimmerman, and Jim. How about it, Jim?
Pleasure.
You good? All right.
Is there a second?
Those are our three.
Madam President, I second it.
Okay, motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you very much.
And following that, we do have board team for meet and confer with classified personnel.
As you know, classified personnel, we meet and confer with them based largely on the terms and conditions of employment for our classified staff throughout the district. And we recommend this year for the 2019-20 school year that you appoint myself, the Director of Human Resources and Legal Services, the Executive Director of Business, the Manager of Human Resources, and two members of the board.
Thank you.
And Madam President, I would move that we would add Emma and Gabe to that.
Okay. Is there a second? Gary? Any discussion? Questions? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, seven zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is to set a special meeting for executive session with Dr. Hardy.
Yes, Madam President. We will need to have an executive session special meeting, and we're planning it for January 10th, 2019, beginning at 5:30 at the district office in the board conference room.
Is there a motion? Jim?
Madam President, I move that we set a special meeting for executive session on Thursday, January 10th, beginning at 5:30 at the district office in the board conference room.
Second?
Emma Doherty, second.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Comment?
Do we need to say what the topic is in the manner of the...
It's executive session personnel, so...
Personnel. Okay, so we...
That's all you can say.
That's an understanding. Okay.
Yeah. Any other questions? Comments? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carried, seven zero. Next on our agenda is our discussion agenda with Patron Insight Incorporated Survey Results. And we have Rick Nobles here for that.
Good evening, and thank you so much for hiring us to once again do an annual telephone survey for you. I believe you have a copy of the report in front of you. If you'll turn to page one, I'm going to walk you through the executive summary, and I will refer you to specific pages in the report for more robust information. But to give you an overview, in November, early December of this year, we completed a 12 to 15-minute telephone survey of 400 randomly selected telephone numbers in the district, both landlines and cellphones. Those were divided geographically into four groups, which the district provided us the population density for. When we do all that and put it together, that gives us a plus or minus 5% margin of error for the poll. For the most part, the survey is identical to ones conducted in 2015 and 2016. For many of these, the report shows findings side by side, allowing for easy comparison for you to be able to look at those. And we always start our surveys with grading questions. We ask a number of grading questions this year. I would ask you to turn to page 11, where there is a recap of all the questions that we ask, and I will talk about some of the highlights of that. Nine of the 19 people program facility and relationship factors plus the overall grade received a grade of B or better. The statistical equivalent of B with this kind of margin for error is a 3.8. So everything above a 3.8 is considered a B. At the top of the list were all building and classroom-related. Quality of the school facilities was number one. How welcome you feel when you visit a school in the district was number two, and that is a very high mark for that particular question. The district's efforts to provide a safe environment in the schools was number three. Only three grades showed a decrease of more than 5% from the previous year. Preparation of students for technical or career training, performance of the Board of Education, and efforts of the district to involve citizens in decision-making. If you look at 2015 and 2018, you will see that those numbers are fairly close. There was a bit of a bump in 2017 that didn't happen. So that, there's a lot of things that can skew a number on a small scale like that. When you look at 10 years' worth of these, it tends to level off. But three years, you'll have that. If you'll notice, that all 19 of the factors are in boldface, which we call patron hot buttons. That means that at least 81% of the people we talked to felt qualified enough to give a grade on that particular question. And that's always good to see, that you have an informed, educated, and engaged population that feels like they can give you a subjective grade on a variety of topics. If you would now turn to page 14, the next question, the next two questions that we ask are strengths of the school district and areas needing improvement. When provided with an open-ended opportunity to share their thoughts, meaning we didn't prompt them, we didn't give them a list of, you know, answers to choose from. We just asked people, strengths of the school district. Number one, teachers topped the list, followed by academics and curriculum. And again, academics and curriculum usually doesn't come in that high. Other came in third place with 58. You can see the verbatim comments that some of those were coded. And then facilities did very well, and you'll see that crop up again if you will turn over to page 18. Where could the district improve? The number one answer was managing and spending money. And as I told some of the staff earlier, usually don't know is the number one answer in that category. It's the only place on a research survey you want to hear the words "don't know" as the number one answer, that people can't readily bring to mind an area that needs improvement. But clearly managing and spending money, as you will see later, is a kind of an ongoing theme there. Most of the other numbers are too small to be of any significance. And then the next question, the biggest challenge facing USD 305 over the next 10 years, you will see on page 23. Again, financing programs and finding funding. At the top of the list with 106 responses. Other, which is the kind of mishmash of verbatim comments, don't know, 59. And then drugs and alcohol and security and safety kind of came in the middle there. I would invite you to turn back to page two, because we ask a long series of questions between pages 28 and 42. And I've highlighted them here for you. I thought it would be easier to go through this in the executive summary. And I'll just kind of run down this fairly quickly. First of all, we asked a question about the district enrollment process, and 88% of individuals thought it was excellent or good, which is a great number. 81% felt the communication about the process was excellent or good, which is even a better number given that topic. Total number and variety of courses, a little lower than you would want to see at 60%, but I made a note there that 17% said don't know. So where you have a little bit lower number of people who think you have good stuff, you got a lot of people who aren't sure. They just don't know what you're offering. Skyward for performance information at 72% is a very good score. District contact from the district about student issues at 67%. Looks a little low, but that's actually a pretty good score when you think about the fact that oftentimes when the district is communicating with a parent directly about something, it ain't something good. So that can leave a bad taste in a parent's mouth, no matter how good a job you did communicating if there was something going wrong with the child's behavior or performance. Quality of parent and teacher conferencing, 97%, excellent or good. I think you should write a book about what you're doing in parent-teacher confer. I've never seen a score that high. You do a fantastic job with parent-teacher conferences. Readership of Peachjar at 67% is actually very high. We have a number of school district clients that use this, and seeing a grade over 50% is unusual, so 67%, very high. We ask a question about the amount of fundraising done by students, and this is a fairly hot topic in K-12 education right now, because there seems to be more and more fundraisers... topic in K-12 education right now, because there seems to be more and more fundraisers every year. Eighty-two percent of people found that the amount of fundraising done by your students was either very reasonable or reasonable. Ninety-two percent said that high cost had not been a deterrent to having a student participate in an activity, and that's great news. You never want costs to keep a student from participating in an extracurricular activity. The idea of offering educational classes to new parents, parents of children who are pre-kindergarten, was a yes by eighty-nine percent of the folks, and a little bit of an astounding number to me, because when people hear something like that, what they hear is, "We're going to spend more money on people who aren't even in the school district yet." That's kind of the automatic reaction. So for eighty-nine percent of the people that say, "Yes, you should do that," you should feel very good about that. Participation on IPS or in IPS, we found that seventy-four percent of students are creating an individual plan. Only twenty-one percent of parents are involved in that process. And then that may be a challenge for you to look at getting more parents educated about what that is, and getting them involved in their students' individual plans going forward. Providing non-academic resources and help for students with needs. You got a fifty-eight percent yes there, which is a little low, but again, you had twenty-six percent of people who said don't know. I suspect if they knew what you were doing, they would be positive on that note, because you're making a good effort there. Awareness of the Equity Council is low at twenty-six percent, but it is a new program for you. This is a benchmark, it will go up in time. And then sensitivity to the needs of all cultures, sixty-two percent excellent or good, but you again had a pretty decent number of don't knows there. You did have some fair and poor grades, so there's some educational opportunities for you there. Then I would invite you to turn to page forty-three, where we talk about information sources for the district. We always ask people a variety, we give people a variety of information sources, and ask them if they consult the resource frequently, to say yes. If they consult it only ever so often, or don't consult it at all, to say no. Taking a look at your numbers, seventy-seven percent friends and neighbors, which is number one for every school district but one in America that we've seen so far, and I can't remember who it was, small district. Your television station and local radio stations jumped tremendously from 2016 and from 2015. Going to attribute that to the political advertising that was taking place at the time that we were doing the survey. Your numbers for the Salina Journal, a little bit down, a typical trend for newspapers, unfortunately, over the last few years. The next several, I think eight, resources are all district-based resources: focus newsletter, teachers, websites, school board, administration, school principals, all of those at thirty-five percent or more. Two things: one, it is very unusual to have that many school resources, be it thirty percent or more, thirty-five percent or more. And then it's also unusual, if you look at page forty-four, that you have another eight or nine items that at least twenty percent of people say they turn to frequently, including KSA Link, district email newsletters, social media, individual newsletters. What this tells us is that you have a very curious, engaged, and want-to-be-informed group of patrons, and that's good to see. We have school districts that we work with that we present a very similar list to, who only get about three items that people turn to frequently. So for you to have that many very good scores, and it speaks to the involvement and the caring of your patrons. So if you'll flip to page forty-seven, a brief summary. The data suggests that you have a very interested and generally satisfied patron population. While the questions and topics repeated from previous years, little to no change, meaning the grades were mostly positive. In terms of topic areas, high marks for enrollment, communications about the enrollment process, patrons are happy with the level and quality of communications, they have no issues with fundraising or costs of activities. They favor the idea of providing education sessions to parents of soon-to-be kindergarteners. While there is a respectable level of participation of students using the IPS tool, most parents are not participating with their student in the process, opportunity there. The district's efforts to provide non-academic services, ensure equality, and be sensitive to the needs of all cultures are largely going unnoticed. But again, new programs, new efforts, awareness should grow over time. And while there is certainly need for opportunity for improvement, and the careful study of this data will reveal areas where you can focus your efforts, overall, the results continue to be positive, meaning that any dedicated effort will fall more under the category of fine-tuning, rather than it will be correction. You have a very good test, you know, a very good research score here. You've done well for the last three years, you continue to trend upward. There's no glaring areas of need, it's fine-tuning, and I think it will continue to go up for you. And I went through that very fast, assuming that you're not as crazy about research as I am, so I will entertain questions and answer them if I can.
Are there any questions, comments?
Do you think that if we were going to look at page forty-three and the huge jump in numbers that apparently are using television stations and radio stations for information, you attributed it, to some degree, to the political advertising that was going on? Would you see that, then, if we again looked at the ten-year spread, that that's an aberration?
Absolutely. That will drop the next time we do this, and it'll drop dramatically.
That's interesting, and might that also, I'm going to assume it would color some of the other responses that we have here, because if people are getting their information from a television commercial, the accuracy of said commercial might not be particularly reliable.
And I used this anecdote earlier. People tend to lump them and us into very large buckets. So I am a citizen, I'm Joe Everett's citizen. You are on the other side of the table, along with politicians and everybody else. So when you have politically charged times, it tends to bleed over. We had a small school district in Missouri about four years ago that ran a bond issue for a one-to-one initiative to purchase Chromebooks. They lost two to one. They hired us to do a post-loss survey. We found the number-one reason they lost Chromebook initiative, number-one reason they lost was Common Core. And the number-two reason they lost was Obamacare. Put those together in your mind and scratch your head over that one. So sometimes when you have a charged political atmosphere like we had in the midterms, you will get some bleed over to kind of everything. People get a little confused, and they're just like, throw the bums out. Yes, ma'am.
Did you find that there were people that said that they did not use cable TV and also did not get the Salina Journal delivered?
We did not. It was not a specific question that we asked. The Salina Journal is going down in readership, and you know, you can follow the demographics of that with most papers. Your cable penetration in this market is remarkably high. There may be people who are not watching cable, but most people have cable, have access to cable.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Nobles, for this fine document here, and we will take this as we move forward.
It's good.
Use this information.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Moving on to school board reports and upcoming dates of importance. Thursday, December thirteenth is our diploma completion program graduation at Salina West at four o'clock. That's this week. And Thursday, January tenth, the Board of Education special meeting at 5:30 PM for personnel. I'll start with Gabe first tonight.
All right. Like several others, attended the Kansas Association of School Boards Conference last weekend in Overland Park, and good discussion with other school boards during that conference and breakouts that I thought were beneficial to all of us. And then commenting on CKCIE Board of Control meeting from November. The legislative post audit on special education was complete. We're awaiting that release. There was a tour scheduled of the cooperating superintendents of special education facilities in 305 that'll take place probably after the first of the year, just so they can kind of get a hands-on and visual look at everything we're doing. Great for students across the co-op. And they continue to work on the, what is a fully-staffed CKCIE and average staff costs. Again, for some of those member districts, to see kind of the benefit for those board members that don't necessarily understand exactly what they're saving by being a part of the co-op, so good discussion as always.
Thank you. Well, I attended the Smokey Hill Education Service Center meetings. We decided to participate in the CEMP, which is the Kansas, Lisa knows that, I think, CEMP means the risk management pool.
Yes.
That's it. And I felt well informed in that, because I'd already been through that training with our board a couple of years ago, I think. I did attend the Kansas Association of School Boards annual conference with several others, and it was interesting as always. I attended the Miracle Worker play at South High, and it was very impressive. I think that I did some more things, but I didn't write them down, so I don't know what they were. Thank you.
I attended the Kansas Association of School Boards Conference, and it seems like this is the season for winter programs, so I've been making as many of those as I can around the country.
Gary?
Like most of us, attended the Kansas Association of School Board meetings, and as part of that, sat by Erin and sat through a lot of the winter school law seminar that was valuable, and also attended the Smokey Hill meetings with Ann. Nothing really to report, but we were all at most of those.
Thank you, Gary. Carol?
No report, madam.
Emma?
I was privileged on November twenty-ninth to go to Grace Stewart School. A part of our strategic plan as a board is to go out to the schools and visit with the personnel and employees and see the students. And so it was really a fun evening, and got to attend their staff meeting and take them a treat, and they truly enjoyed it, and it was a lot of fun. So anyway, good staff meeting.
That's good. I attended a Chamber of Commerce meeting, and there was a nice report of the Salina Airport and what it's doing for Salina and how it's growing. Haze isn't so happy, I don't think, but we're sure getting people into Colorado and up to Chicago with that. Attended Kansas Association of School Board Conference also with these people, and attended breakout sessions, which I think are always good and educational, and you always come away with something. Another nice takeaway was getting to spend a non-meeting time with our cohorts on the board, and I think that offered an opportunity for us to get better acquainted. I attended the Kansas Wesley and Candlelight service on Sunday. South and Central choirs presented each of them two songs, and it's a very beautiful service. If you ever, the tickets are free, but you have to sign up for them. But go sometime if you have a chance. There's always a three o'clock and a seven o'clock. Last night, I attended Matt Gary's guitar performance at South Middle School, and it was an hour and a half worth of guitar music and singing and joyous middle-school students. They were happy, and he does have an advanced class now, which is really great. At the conference, I also had the opportunity to nominate a good friend from southeast of Celine's school board to be, what? She is the... Lori. Yeah. Lori Blake. I've known since before birth, and we got to see her stand up and give a speech, and she has also been elected as president-elect of Kansas School Board. And we also got to see our very own Shanna Rector receive an award for going through the leadership training. So that was lots of fun, too, and we got to know Shanna since she was there, too. So I appreciate all of everyone participating. Dr. Hardy?
Madam President, thank you. Today, the area superintendents met with some of our legislators, specifically Representative Concanon was here, Representative Johnson, and Senator Hardy. And the purpose of the meeting today was just to kind of touch base. It was interesting, we were talking about the midterms, and you'd think we could just put that behind us, but with the session coming up very quickly, we thought it was real important to touch base with our legislators. It was very interesting to hear their perspective on the change in the landscape in both the House and the Senate, because there were some changes, and of course, there's a change in the governorship. So we were talking about how all the parts of that may play out. So it was really interesting. The nice thing, or the interesting thing about visiting with them in that setting is you kind of get the behind-the-scenes insights that they give, you know, like if someone was running for the House, you know, chairman or the head of the House, and you didn't vote for him, how that could jeopardize your chance for being on a committee. So I thought that was interesting. So politics is alive and well in Topeka. Later this week, Representative Johnson, by the way, he is very approachable, and he is really a pleasure to visit with. He's going to meet with Lisa Peters and I, and we talk, so we can talk a little bit about what we perceive is going to happen, share some things that we believe is important to us. And then also, again, just to make sure that, you know, as he goes through the session, and he gets pulled so many different ways, that he remembers his friends in Salina, and that we can keep that close connection with him. See, I want to, we just finished our, I guess we would call this, Lisa, our site council tour. So we go on tour each year, just like a rock band, I think. And we go around to all the site councils, and we give, like, I guess I would call it the State of the District Report. So it's kind of fun to tell our story, and the folks that are there, we talk to them about, like, even hiring, you know, or help us recruit teachers. And a lot of them see that as an important thing as well, so we appreciate that. And it's our chance to really, like I said, tell our story, and we encourage them to tell the story as well. So when we talked about the Patron Insight and communication, this is an important part of that. I also had, I thought I had a really, I had a great time at the KSB convention. I think part of it was, there were some new topics that I haven't seen there before. It was very interesting. Ann and I went to one that was very interesting in the afternoon, and I saw some of our other folks at them. It was just very interesting to see things that are coming our way at schools, and that by going to this, we're knowledgeable, and we can share the information when we return to our school district. And then the last thing, like last evening, I got to see Mr. and Mrs. Fletcher on a date, going to a junior high concert. And so it is the concert season, and I, you know, there's just something really special when you go to all these concerts, that you could see when you're in the audience and you look up on the stage, you go, wow, those are our students. And you know, I don't know about you, but there's just a couple of things that has to happen this time of the year to put you in the school spirit or in the spirit of the season, and going to school events like this really makes you feel that way. So I know we've got several more still coming, if you can all, from kindergarten all the way up through high school, so feel free to participate in any of those. Madam President, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, next on our agenda, we do need a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
executive session for personnel. How long do we need that? 15 minutes? Let's start with 15 minutes.
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that the Board of Education go into executive session at 5:55.
Could we do a little bit longer? We do need to take a photo, so could we do?
Let's do six.
Do six o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay. I move that we go into executive session at 6 o'clock for 15 minutes for the purpose of discussing personnel matters of non-elected personnel and their contractual obligation. Because if this matter were discussed in open session, it might invade the privacy of those discussed. And that the Board reconvene, and that the Board of Education reconvene into open session at 6:15 in the board conference room.
There a second?
Second.
Ann? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, seven zero. We will adjourn and continue our meeting at 6:00 PM in executive session. Thank you all for coming. If you'd like to stay and see the outcomes, you're welcome to stay in this room.
So Jennifer is going to line you up and help you get a picture taken.
Okay.